The September 12th town council meeting order. First item on the agenda is pledge allegiance to the House here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so the moment of silence. Is there anyone we'd like to up the?
I was gonna say to hold Sarah Langen camp and her family members and everyone affected by what happened to Virchus by a car ride or bike. Home from working with Pezzza a couple of weeks ago, this child has two small children, very young, very sad. And also, I think the person who picked her.
Anybody else? Anybody on the screen have someone? I'm not seeing any other guests, but just bow heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Council, you all had the opportunity to review them. I don't recall seeing anyone saying they had any edits. So, see your motions approved.
I approve minutes from the August 8th, when we're going through town council.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Susan. All right, we're going down the next item under the mayor and town council. The 10025 Frederick Avenue variance hearing, max.
Mayor and councilor, before you receive me, our Mr. and Mrs. Snow here for a variance of 10025 Frederick Avenue. We received requests. We notified the adjacent and adjacent property owners of the variance request. We've not received any comment. And they are here to, actually, would like to come to the committee.
Okay. Yes, you have a letter.
They received the yes.
Yeah, so we're, we want to request a variance from the site here at the town. The position is 5144B. We're intending to make an addition to the front of the house. And the piece of land that we saw narrowed as you go to the front. At the very front, there's room for exactly one part of the park and then dark. So, the addition at the front, very front corner of the addition, a little bit of corners, six over the, what would be the template section line. The plan is otherwise in quite a lot of time Hemington, right? It's also in quite a lot of companies, everything else. And a little more detail in the letter and along the.
As Mr. Snow mentioned, there is an exception within our code for an addition. This exceeds the 650 square foot exception, so it does not apply. So they are requesting a two-foot variance into our 10-foot side yard setback for a total of, was it 15? 15 square feet. The only thing unique about this was it is a front line addition. But it does not affect the established border line, which on these earlier regulations, so there will be no issues there. So there will be any strict variance requests. And staff did provide a note with further background information.
We had a similar case on Dupont. I believe it was a new house that, I mean, it was kind of funny. She brought up a piece of cardboard, the section that was actually going to be extending into the that was just so tiny. It was like, oh, yeah. So it was a big difference by having that example. So this is kind of reminding me of that little wedge there, so. And a great cardboard design.
Send them back to the garden.
Yeah. It's funny how these towns, how far back that they're set. I mean, these are deep lots, too, very deep lots.
To deepen there.
Yeah, deepen and narrow, yeah, but kind of a pie shape too, so, yes. Okay, council, is there any more questions?
I think we do have to go through the standard ordinance. And honestly, I'm not sure.
I know, they have to even back from the sack.
And so I guess the question that I'll pose to you is, you know, in the need, and I think that it's the minimum necessary to overcome the hardship. And what is it about going out back into addition that wasn't feasible?
So I'm gonna ask our architect, my husband, that's fine, join me. But I think one of the initial pieces of this is, is that if we were to add to the bad, we essentially have to like the format of what's in the house, what's around. We'd have to renovate the back and front of the house instead of just the back.
Hi, Margaret, I've been some of an architect. So, we're trying to do the least amount of work on the house as possible. It's an unusual house to start with because the living room, dining room, and kitchen are at the rear of the house. The bedrooms and the bathroom are at the front of the house, so there's no front door. You have to come up the driveway around, almost past the house to enter. So, unable to maintain as much of the existing house, we didn't want to touch the living room, dining room, kitchen. So what we did was we create, we're creating a front porch and a hallway that, that is going to impact those front bedrooms. And so we're pushing the front bedrooms forward. So we had looked at going up, going back, but there's a really nice patio in the back. You know, we just didn't want to disrupt stuff that, that was in good shape and worked well. So, we, we looked at going forward, so the sides of the house, the sides of the addition align with the sides of the existing house. So, but the further forward we depth, the narrower a lot gets. So that's how we ended up with this little 15 square, 15 and a half square foot corner that's over. And we're not mansending, we're not like adding a bunch of extra rooms, I think, is it a name of one bedroom?
One room.
One, one room, not even a bedroom. It's like a little entry for your music area. But it really is a reorganization of what's there and the front porch, so.
Do you get any correspondence or do you just expect correspondence with adjacent?
We do not. We provided the documentation to the required residents. We see no communication as of 4:00 PM this afternoon. Did you guys get any letters of support?
Some informal comments from the neighbors.
Neighborly over the best conversations that we have in writing. Yeah, one of the neighbors offered to come if we, if we wanted her to be here today. We've been to San Francisco.
I don't know. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what their universal things, looking at the neighbors.
Well, that would have been Rose Darren's house. That would have been most affected and she was not concerned about this at all.
I don't have any questions. It seems like a good use of an unusually sized lot. And I think I know from walking that street with my dog, how sort of far setback is and adding the porch angle actually helps connect it to the, to the street and neighbors.
It is an odd house because when I've dropped down flyers, it's like, so where's the front door?
I think it's on the hard table of the driveway.
I know, it's a very.
It's very strange.
It is, yeah, it's, where do I put this so people will find it? I'm sure the Amazon guy has the same problem, so.
I, my understanding is the previous owner who worked for a very long time felt it very, very home security minded.
Oh, okay. So if we hide the front door. Okay, any other questions in council?
I guess the only question I would have is the size of the bedroom has been added. It's 12, 12 six, is that right?
Well, we're actually not adding a bedroom. We're just shifting the bedrooms. Because it's going from three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and we bisected with the hallway so that you can get from the front porch to the living room, dining room, kitchen. So we're just shifting the bedrooms around really. And the only room we're adding is the little entry foyer music room, which is within the setbacks. That's why we did that build shift.
But the part that sticks out into the, into the, inside, inside lot setback. If you were to take off those two feet, it would totally change the.
Yes, it's, since it's a angled lot line, we have to not just take off, well, our options would be to build the wall at an angle, which would make it look really funky and structurally.
Or you could just have a couple of jump.
Yeah, so we would have, you know, yeah, it's not a huge bedroom. We just want to make sure there's room for the bed and a nightstand on either side. We don't even have the width to have like a walkway and then a dresser.
It looks really cramped already. This is wrong. I'm just curious.
With every archetypal.
Oh, my point is that if you, if you, yeah, you try to fit as much as possible within the, within reason, right?
Yes.
It would actually narrow it.
Yes. Yeah, I think at that point, we have to think about going out. Any questions? Um, does anybody in the audience have a question? Anyone online? I don't see any hands. I don't see a hand. Okay, we're, we're good. Council want to make a motion?
I think that we have a rule that requires for a variance to where this to remember. Of course, it's a section 5104, building 1st of town code.
Okay.
So we're making a motion in support of, to the variance request. And the variance will be, sorry, a resolution will be provided at the next council.
At the next.
The reason why is we, we need to know what the council approves to draft a resolution. So, you're supporting the motion and then we'll, staff will proceed with the resolution for approval at the October 10th.
No, it's right there. It's printed right there.
It's right there. It's right there.
I make a motion that the council support the variance request and that we have a resolution to draft for approval on the October 10th. I'm trying to town council again.
Is there a second? Have some job here. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. All right.
Thank you all.
So, we'll vote on the resolution next month and then you guys can move forward. Okay, four thumbs gone. Great. Thank you.
If you can, I would like to get at least that neighbor's support and ready.
Oh, Rose, just send a, have a send an email. Just tell him. Okay, thanks so much. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go down to number two, the noise control leave for mobile equipment. The letter, Darren.
So we talked about this at the last meeting. The substance of the comments are fairly changed. There are a few tweaks as far as just being more precise with the effect language and sort of asking for the council to consider, you know, more precisely some environmental aspects of gas powered equipment. But the letter itself is unchanged from what we shared last month. Which is, and it's on the table here.
Where is it? Right?
Should we summarize? People who are online, just real quick.
Sure, I can, you can tell me if you have.
Yeah.
So we can get them back.
So, so the first aspect of the comments is clarify, because we, you know, the town crew uses a trailer that pulls, you have a truck to vacuum up leaves that it then uses gas, leak blowers blow into the vacuum. And that trailer is gas powered, so we want the county to clarify that that trailer that they pull behind the truck is not covered by this ban. The next point is asking them to really assess the trade-offs between gas-powered and battery-powered equipment. So if the battery-powered equipment does not work as quickly or as effortlessly and is the additional work, are they taking that into account when they pass this ban? And then it also asks them to consider health aspects of both the gas-powered ban and whether there's a health benefit to switching to that. If, if the ban went into effect today, our equipment that the town's bought for the group, they could use. Other bans have gone to effect for
Over a period of time.
Over a period of time. And so you would get the option of, you simply could agree not to buy more gas powered equipment. So when that equipment needed replacing, you would switch. We'd have a chance to amortize the value of the equipment. That's not present in the proposal. And I should say that these comments are limited to the most part to the effect of this ban on municipalities. It doesn't really, I mean, aside from asking for a robust social justice analysis, it doesn't really ask for an injunction or it doesn't it doesn't oppose the ban as it applies to private landscapers. The other consideration is other municipalities that have previously managed equipment allow it during lease season, from October to November and December. When it's critical to get the lease up. And part of the reason that I'm motivated to move forward with these comments is our crew has a tremendous amount of leaves to collect. And we don't get them all at once. And they often get rained on and then they compact. And they just are not amenable to being blown with the lighter, the equipment, the battery equipment. We need the rates, we need the gas powder blower, and then we need that trailer to drive that, pulls behind. So I, I think, well, and then the one thing I added and made a good comment at the last meeting was that we should have an educational component to this that would include the value of legal leaves in your yard for composting purposes. And that's similar to the, these ban on herbicides where they told us that our first and foremost value is education and reduction of heat, the enforcement. So that's the gist of the comments.
Here. No, I mean, mine, just things I keep thinking about as we look this over. The implementation cost summary that the county provided and the, you know, that breaks down what the changeover costs would be. And this being a health impact that is better for hearing, better because of fumes. There's not anything in here about potential negatives. If the equipment isn't as effective, if they go back to more manual, you know, if there's more manual need, you know, workers' compensation claims, injury. Have they studied any impact to, you know, equipment, if the batteries don't work, that they keep doing work, you know, they're doing it manually. There's no economic reviews that.
Right, this is proposed solely under the noise ordinance. And so there, even though, you know, a lot of people are upset about the fumes, it's, it's really focused on the noise in there. And in some ways, you know, I think a landscaping company or the town can address the noise impact on the workers with your protection under worker protection laws. That doesn't address the impact that the equipment has on residents who are trying to cause the work.
Any questions or comments? Does anybody in the audience have a comment they would like to make? Okay, not too many, yes. So, do we want to make a motion to draft the letter? Because we, it's the 20th, is when they.
Comments are due by the 20th.
Okay.
So, I make a motion that we, direct town staff to take the comments as the literature and whatever gets the response to be.
Okay, there's a second? All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. So, let's see. So they have to be the run of the 20th, right? Which is Tuesday. Great, let me pray, can't see to October then, that you need.
So, you know, October is Walkover in the state of Maryland. Now for the town of Kensington, we had a inaugural event last year where we ordered safety vests that were granted over October, Kensington. And the point is to raise awareness around pedestrians and just getting people out and walking. And so we did a tour of some of the improvements that we identified, some of the challenges we identified, some of the pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group. Which I thought was pretty successful last year, so this year the working group has been racking our brains of what we want to propose for an event this year, or a series of events. So I'd like feedback on that because we met last week. So what we're thinking about doing is kind of two to three things. The date would be October 29th with the main date of that Sunday, the following Sunday, like we had that exercise last time, I think we used the main date. It would center around the Connecticut Avenue corridor study that we did with the TLC grant and some of the prioritization recommendations from that grant, just to show people, you know, what are we thinking, what is it, what quiet, where would things go when we pursue some of these solutions? And just kind of walk that section and point it out and discuss a little further, you know, get interest from residents for advocating for those because we will have to do some advocating on our own and pushing the county council, for example, to do improvements, keeping up with S H A to make sure that they're doing what is recommended in the report. So that would be the first part. And we'd also, either preceding that or following that, we would do a training on the walkability auditing process. So, two years ago, we did an audit of all the streets and identified all the improvements that could have been made or should be made. And we agreed as a working group, to do that every two years, so it's coming up again for December. We want other members of the community to get involved and participate, so we'll do a training on the tail end probably of that.
So is this going to require like coming into town hall?
No, we would just, we would just do it.
And then as you're walking?
Yeah, so people that want to get involved with doing the auditing process later in November, December, might not be part of the working group, can still participate. It'll take a half hour. And then the last thing we were considering, but I think we'll have to shelve until, until spring or maybe next October, was doing a walking case team tour of Kensington, just to kind of get people out to walk to the various, some of the various restaurants. But we realized that the process to, you know, select the, kind of solicit interest, it would take a little bit too long. The one thing that we've been throwing around and we, we made use of as an incentive for people, the training is maybe train everybody and then pick a section of the town that's over, you know, on this side. And maybe end up as a baby cat for, for, or a case team, and they seem amenable to that, so that'll be a little extra incentive potentially in the process. But yeah, just curious for feedback, what do you think? We have people organized on the committee, on the working group to help with planning it, getting the flyers out.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I wrote down, you know, reach out to Kerry M. to help with the commercial. Any more bets?
I think we have the date on that. We may, we may need another set. Oh, is that a master? I don't know.
I still have one.
Is it, is it something 2021?
Need little stickers.
I think it sounds like a good idea. Mind training, because who are more people willing to sit doing, you know, the walkability auditing? And when John Anderson organized the walk along Silver Creek, he had it in that hotel market for ice cream cones. And I think maybe John thought that was, that was effective, so I encourage you to, to take that back.
We did that with Dewey. We ended at Dish and Dran.
Yes.
And had iced tea and then we, something to eat. And it was good. It was a good way to close off, you know, that walk tour that we did.
Yeah, well, like next year, I think we, we probably will have more time to plan it, but I think something that's promoting walking around at the businesses and restaurants or something like that. A walking tasting tour with me. An attractive option for a new type of event.
Great.
Any feedback? Go for it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, number four, Green Team. Is that you and Anne?
It is, since I've talked, it's now, like, no.
I'll start and then you can add in. So, we put out the call for volunteers, both in the town journal and on the lister. We put up some flyers and apartment buildings around town. And we actually heard from over a dozen volunteers, including two high school students so far, which is great. We are in the process of planning for our first meeting, which will likely be in early October. And while Nate and I are planning and to get organized with the new team, wanted to have a conversation around sort of the initial scope in terms of membership and who could be eligible to participate. There have been some town committees and working groups that went beyond town borders and others that were confined depending on the subject matter. And we're thinking that given the scope of this work, it might make sense to to ask that people who participate live within the town or within the area that's under the sector plan. It all sort of fits together with looking at many of the different sustainability actions. And that likely will be coming back to you. You'll be very involved, the council will be, and the action plan, CE certification on behalf of the town.
Well, the buy-in has to come from the town residents. I mean, as far as making a sustainable town, we want the majority for sure be town residents. So, but the sector plan moving to Ken Garre. And because it's a, the triangle, which doesn't have any residents, but where CBS is.
Oh, yes, it does.
Yeah.
It does.
And out west hour, maybe.
It does include West Howard, down.
Yeah, all the way down to, but again, there's not too many residents there.
No, with businesses and that's other thing is that we, if it's okay, but.
Yeah, please.
It's great. We've got a lot of interest. It seems like a pretty good diverse group of, I think there's importance in this to have a balance of expertise and advocacy. Because you need people with a passion. Some people who are passionate may not necessarily be technically skilled in, I guess, doing the assessments or the evaluation, but you also want those. But we will probably have, we really want to be representative of the community. And we might have to do some active recruitment, just to make sure some of the.
Get the expertise.
Not the expertise, but also, I want to have expertise, but the representation too, making sure that we get the, you know, business representatives. If it doesn't, if it doesn't include, you know, Ken Garre, we want to make sure that there's members of that community there. But I think that, and I talked about it, we felt like having it around the boundaries of the sector plan would probably make sense, just because we have to draw the line somewhere, right? Or not draw a line at all, so I would, I think we prefer that, but we, we want feedback on that. Or not draw a line at all. So I would, I think we prefer that, but we we want feedback from them, from all you.
Council, any questions?
I should say so far, I think everybody has.
Is a town resident.
Is a town resident who has its best interest.
Well, I mean, that's good because then again, that is the buy-in, they they want they want us to be a sustainable.
Yeah, though potentially as we do additional recruitment in business community, they could be within the sector plan, but outside.
Residing outside, yeah.
Reside, yeah. Under your statement now.
No, I mean, I was just, I'm looking at the sector plan map and outside of our municipal, where we have the sharp fin that we annexed. Um, there's the little bit of the triangle wedge, which. Because of our sector plan and potentially because of uh some of that extended and, you know, what we're hoping. That that will do as far as improving connectivity, I think, is such a plan map. It's a lot of sense, especially for Kendra. Um, you know, a lot of what we talked about in the sector plan, some avenue, all this is is how to create in in that connective tissue between the communities. So, but yeah.
Is there a an opportunity for anything like Kaiser, eminent to to escape in this? I mean, I don't know how much medical is green, but I mean.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Two question.
What are they doing?
I have no idea. Two point.
Because they're there now.
We do, we we have a lot of work.
Yeah.
Well, Matt, we have contacts there, don't we, at Kaiser?
I'm sure they have members.
I'd like to think. I mean, they're one of our largest employers. One. Um. Uh, does anyone in the audience, I'd be glad to ask if anyone had a question regarding the um walk, Walktober. So if you have a question about that. I'd be too, take that question as well. Oh. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. One more we have left.
Yes, that's exactly.
Any questions?
Well, I said on, yeah.
I got a lot to.
Yeah, well, and walk to right.
Okay.
You take him on the green.
I'm sorry?
The green committee.
Did you want to get up and ask a question? Oh, please.
Uh, George Buckwalter, Fosse Street. Um, I'm just wondering about the uh noise component within. This uh Maryland.
Sustainable Maryland State of Resilience.
I mean, that's a big aspect of the environment, is the noise and. You know, being on Fosse Street with more added noise and activity. That's the fire department. We've got uh jets in and out of Nashville. We have Air Force jets going to Andrews. Uh, we have fire department. Um, we've got trains, commuters and freight trains. Um, my take is it ought to be deemed a noise sensitive area and that can be done through the county executive.
Where would you, where do you want, where would you have this designation?
Well, I mean, you uh, you know, Howard Avenue from the train, you know, that that's one element of it. I mean, the the um crossing was put in there under the shovel wreck. In the Obama administration. I mean, they never got to control straightened out on it, but it's like a forest plant. And they got them to quit signaling with a horn up there. It was the first place in Maryland to do that, it's crossing. I don't see why you couldn't pressure uh. The mark train to get that signal straightened out. I mean, certainly, I I don't have any, I couldn't find out how much you spent on that, but I'm sure that was a very expensive project. To put those uh crossing signals there and you never got it straightened out. And there's thousands and thousands of crossings in this country and it's seen the work. But they couldn't get that one working. But I mean, you know, the horns are, I mean, especially if you're up there by the gas station and that seems to be a spot where, you know, they're supposed, you know, they're supposed to signal. But uh, you know, it was deemed to, you know, a noise, you know, a non-horn area, then if you had a cross mark, it's no different. Cross, cross and fanatic, that would be a lot. But so.
Matt, did did John ever say anything about those crossings? Just that why they're not working? I mean, they they're there.
They were they were removed because.
Well, then I know the reason.
Yeah, they were removed because of not. Uh, they were giving false signals on trains. They weren't operating when trains were coming. Um. And I'm, I mean, I, CSX is regulated by the federal administration. It's their line. MTA is the one that put in the signals. Um, we have spoken to CSX, but the same way the Berners-Pac and the Transit Administration. You know.
Were they only using it for the mark trains or were they using it for CSX trains?
They were using it all, all trains.
For the cross. Of course, if they go and strike and fight, you might have to work that in.
Yeah, I mean, I will say even even the crossings with signals, I can't speak for the franks, the mark still goes on.
Right.
Um, and every crossing, I mean, there's a signal there. So. I don't know if that's a regulation from the federal uh government administration or not, and I don't know enough about it. So I don't know how that would work on a designation for quiet zone.
Or is the mark train stopping actually too?
Not at every station.
But they stop at ours, right?
They do, but even, so like even if they're opposite track, they're required to blow the horn.
Okay.
Stop short, blow the horn and then receive. Uh, that is their standard protocol.
Mm hmm.
But like you said, I mean, every crossing they blow.
And that's a another issue, the uh mark trains, the new steam and uh engines.
Loud.
They were very loud, a lot louder than the old uh. The old engines or older engines, still have two previous generation running. They're loud. Fan, it's fan noise. Very, very well, but you know, it's just more noise. And you know how we love noise, the noise.
So we have a noise library.
Uh, I must say at the uh concert on Saturday night with touch fire. Except when somebody got on the P A and started yelling. Then it's it's at a different level than what they're saying. And then they hear, you know, another speechy voice added to it. It was very outrageous.
Were these children?
No, adults. You know.
But they, you were there till nine thirty, did you hear that?
No, I might have missed that part, but um.
It's just.
Maybe back to the point you were raising though about the green team and the noise. I just.
Right.
Um, I think we probably have a chance to talk about, maybe we could talk about that now, but we'll give you some time, but I want to make sure that it's addressed. I think that, I mean, I appreciate the comment about sustainability and the link.
Right.
Um, I can see a connection if you if you if you think about it. Um, hard enough about it, but it's not one of the, it doesn't get mentioned in the certification process at all.
Okay.
I would just suggest that if we're gonna have a conversation on on that, if there's a noise.
Separate it up.
Separate it out because it's pretty clear in the criteria that on the actions and I mean, I'll look a little closer, but I didn't see anything related to like. Noise and I mean, again, I I personally can see a potential link, but I don't think it's part of the green team.
Yeah, I just my take, it's it's just, it's all environmental or encompassing, so.
Yeah, health environment and.
And then, you know, detracts, you know, noise detracts because.
Is lighting in there? Light pollution?
I I didn't look close enough. It may be, it may be, and I know hopefully um.
I know, Jack talks about that.
Talk about that, yeah, um.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but this is again, the point of having a green team so we can go and dig in, see what is, where we're deficient, where we're doing good things, where we can innovate more.
Yeah.
Um, but we can report out once we have a kind of what's required for the certifications that form a green team. And then have an action plan. Those are two minimum requirements. And then on top of that, you have to do all of the actions that accumulate to points and you can pick the different actions. Um, but we we can report on much longer relevant and.
Hey, George. Okay. Uh, design guidelines, um, kind of US to be put on the agenda.
Uh, so just speaking to a few of her, well, really, and I have a couple, but we were talking about Thrive, which is the county's um. Plan for updating the general plan of how development would be done across the county. And we talked a little bit about. Um, we had a variance hearing today, other variances that we have seen, and new patterns that are evolving around how architects are are. Designing buildings to maximize square footage. And so we began a conversation of what should we be doing as a town to. Address some of these things that we're starting to see and hear. And the very first step we talked about was that Pride needs to pass. Before our sector plan would ever get looked at in conjunction with the county. But what we want to do is is take a look at the design guidelines and maybe get an ad hoc group of of residents together just to start. A process of reviewing it and determining, does it still, do the principles and the concepts within the design guidelines still speak to. What we want to be sending out as our signal to potential developers or property owners about how we'd like to see their properties redeveloped or integrated into the streetscape or. Public art in the public benefits process, realizing that our design guidelines were passed in conjunction with county and that is. The process is going to need to start at some point. And so tonight is just an introduction of the idea. Um, and so it would be, you know, just soliciting interest from town residents just to start a discussion around. The current design guidelines, what we're seeing and what we, you know, does it still hold true for um redevelopment?
So just to kind of like markup or update the design guidelines, the ultimate goal would be to have the park and planning. Update base, so it's got their name on it?
Yeah, I mean, that would be mine because.
Whatever we do, there's no obligation of anything we write up.
Right. Right, we have to work in partnership with Park and Planning. So. Not, you know, I, my belief is that they would take, they would start no undertaking without Thrive having tax. And we don't know for certain when that will be, but you know, it could be in a month, six weeks, it could be a whole nother year, but at some point, I believe the county council will take up. Um, the new general plan and have some version of. And this is our, just starting the review process, realizing that we just, we don't want to be caught. Um. Starting too late, right? This may be erring on starting too early, but we want to get people together and just start a conversation about what's in the document now. As well as a conversation with planning around. What will be their timeline and process and, you know, scope for uh. Relooking at sector plans, design guidelines, master plans as Thrive is taxed.
Do you think it would be a good idea to maybe update some of our own codes to include like the.
Yes.
We have concerns about.
Yes, I mean, that is, I think that's.
Lot percentage.
A great place to start. I think our code for land use is right now, much of it is tied back to the counties. We we piggyback off the county's code. Many of our neighboring municipalities have started to write their own. Specific language around land use ordinances, so setbacks, front, rear, sides, total lot coverage by square footage of percentage. Um, right down to, you know, we've had two in the recent years where the county has changed and we, because we piggyback off the county. Um, where we had to play catch up. One was fences. Uh, what height could be uh used in front or inside of fences and the other one is the bay window. And what is the definition of a bay window and and, you know, we saw that through a variance process. I do, I would like to see us also begin to look at all of that code around ordinances and and begin to. Start this discussion of what things we want to um separate ourselves from what is in the county code and, for lack of a term, hard code into our code forms.
Okay, we kind of started that over, I feel like it's like two years ago. And we've never got, I I kind of like to get something done before we start getting into the design guidelines, because I've been done this rapidly before. And it's very difficult for people to, especially if they don't have, um, they're not in the field, you know, actually explaining their vision. I mean, we're not professionals. So I don't mind taking what you have and kind of marking it up, see if we can't. Get ready to update it, but I'd kind of like to see us get those codes updated, maybe having success there. Before we start going into something else and then we end up with two unfinished projects. That would be a concern for me. From the comments.
The code process that was started that predated the thrive, so I think. The idea is to sort of proactively look at thrive and it sounds like from the discussion, it can be a two-part. Looking at codes and potential changes there and then looking at the line guidelines.
Well, I think, I think we have a good idea of what thrive is going to do. I don't think they're going to change it too much, but I think we had. Entertained changing these codes and we've yet to get it done. I'd like to see us get those done. I think we were all in. Um, we knew we weren't here, but um the windows, I think we were. We're in on the discussion. Um, and there was one other, what was the other one?
Lot coverage.
Lot coverage that we had agreed on and we just can't get um. The language completed. So we need to get that done. I think I'd like to see that. In our code, because that's going to, that's like, you know, you got to induce it, you got to have a hearing. Accept it, then it's going to take thirty days to take effect.
County is addressing the bay window issue. Um, they're working with the. Everyone's owners association, the firm, the firm is to print that. What they told us was anything they pass, we're probably gonna give about a year's clearance to allow the architects or engineering firms to adjust to that. But last I heard, they they had not done. We we dressed that. And probably last October, last November. Yeah. And they have not sent a photograph either. I I would be all for kicking out the Garrett Park language and the code would basically hardwire the county code department setbacks, interventions. And then it it just protected it from subsequent provisions by the county and we don't. So I think that would be a fairly. Oh, fairly. Easy. Code management change to that. And if we're different from what the county negotiates, that's just part of.
Well, they've always said the option is coming in for variance.
Right. So I I guess knowing how the county moves. I would, I would move forward.
We can always consider it if they're making a change to their code, whether we adopt it back into our hardware. Is this, I have a quick question. Is this for, if we are unpacking the guide, the design guidelines, does it indirectly then open up the sector plan?
No, I mean, it's like the two-step practice. Yeah, um, and there's a whole whole public process from part of planning to sector plan as well.
I just want to make sure that they're fully separated.
No, this is part of the, I mean, there's been different comments if you participated in Thrive meetings from part of planning of. The acknowledgement is, you know, there's a lot of energy around Thrive and Thrive passes. There isn't going to be an immediate update to sector or master plans. It could be a decade. Um, and and so there will be this tightrope or, you know, dance that has to be done of. Thrive says this is what is envisioned. It's not, you know, it's not a zoning document, but envisioned. There may be multiple C T As that come after it. That change land use and zoning and other things, but our sector plan now doesn't, you know, it was based on old code and. You know, trying to uh do a, you know, a a crosswalker translation between those two, it's going to be awkward for a period of time, but. There's a, you know, there are. Sector master plans across the county and eventually, I mean, as far as ours being ten, ten years old, I mean, Silver Spring is one, just got passed and it could be subsequently. Somewhat out of date. So, but I don't know where we will rack and stack as far as. Priority or just ordering to do biggest, you know, largest land area, smallest or oldest to newest, who knows when our.
Well, more than likely, I mean, our other sector plan was what thirty years old or something? Well, more than likely, I mean, our other sector plan was, what, thirty years old or something like that by the time they got around to it?
Yeah.
But I mean, I don't feel like the design guidelines are, they're guidelines first of all.
Yeah.
And no one is, you know, we all have different tastes architecturally, you know. But I think we've done a pretty good job in getting builders to use quality materials, to get their buildings finished on all, not just three sites, but on all four sites. But if you go up to Rockville, it has, you know, their own planning. You know, they've got buildings that look great in the town center, but if you look behind them, it's just beige siding. I mean, there's a back to those buildings at face three fifty-five that, you know, you can get to see. And so I think we've done a fairly good job with this. And, you know, I don't see, you know, especially with the project at the Bakers Union that that, you know, materializes, we're never going to have these design guidelines. I don't think completed in a time period, but they would be building that.
Because of working with planning.
Well, I just, it's just, it's a difficult process. It sounds easy to just sit there and look, oh, well, which is changing, so it just catches that. It's, it's a, it's a very difficult project. Because you'll get people that just can't, I mean, I work for an architect, she can't articulate what that vision is. And when you can't do that, it's really difficult.
Sure, and I, I think there's enough language in the design guidelines that, that states that they're not meant to be architectural.
Right, you know, pieces of trash cans you can use and these are the, yeah, it's.
Yeah, and it's not on par with an HOA type of thing.
It is a guideline, it's, you know, we like utilities, there's not a whole lot that, um, it's better for the builder to point to it and say, well, you've got it in your guidelines, rather than, well, we've got these in our, no, you, we're not required to follow that sort of business, you know, so it's.
Sure. So the, the motivation was to try to be proactive, knowing that thrive will be enacted. And in fact, you know, when you read our sector plan and our design guidelines, there are points that are very much in harmony with what had been proposed in thrive. We talked about this before as well. But knowing that there's going to be a, a shift and what's possible likely over time through the Saturday amendments to take a look at how we can support the goals of providing virtually housing options for people while still supporting our rules of around some of the other things you care about with connection between residents and public spaces and greenery and sustainable Maryland efforts. So I thought was to try to get someone from Task Force looking at that, looking at what we had and making some recommendations about what might be sense to move forward.
Well, I, I do feel like we've done a lot of things that are lingering that we haven't completely. We've got a lot of task force right now going on.
Yes.
And I don't think we should overstretch. Um, I just, I, I don't mind, you know, I just, I'd like to see the, um.
Yeah.
I'd like to get the language on the code completed, would feel better about that.
Okay.
Get that completed and then we can start looking at the design guidelines.
Is it possible to do kind of like a test case, but doing the, or at least exploring what parts of the design guidelines could be improved upon in a real case like the Bakers Union building or the Summit Avenue Extension corridor? And we want to see what questions, what, what is the point in these design guidelines that we might be missing?
Well, we actually, did you want to bring that up on the, the corridor, the, the Summit Avenue?
Oh, you know, what I was going to do is say, before, you know, during the discussion, before we start sending a ton of energy around it or anything around it, why don't I take a step backwards and reach out to Park and Planning and discuss with them just our thought process around this and hear feedback from them on if ultimately it will be to have this actually approved and officially by Park and Planning, you know, what is that undertaking? Because it may just say, don't bother, right? So I will take that and then while doing that, we address the ordinance issues of looking at our landscape.
Okay, I, I'd agree to that. I think, I mean, we have obviously time on the Summit Avenue Extension corridor. And the contract on the Bakers Union, that they have ninety days.
For due diligence.
For due diligence and they could extend that, is that correct?
Correct.
Haven't heard anything back.
We have not, so just, I know the audio, we're going to work on improving the audio. But yes, the Bakers Union, which is right out in front of Town Hall, there is a contract purchaser who has, is looking to purchase the building. They are under contract in order to do their due diligence to make sure that what they were told and what was in the package is accurate and all that. So that is currently happening. Once the contract is finalized and the transaction occurs, I mean, their intent that they have signaled is that they would redevelop that whole property. They remove the building that is there and build something new that would meet our sector plan. So, but there, there is, there are no plans, there's no meetings. It's just something that has been signaled over the horizon, assuming that the, the real estate transaction goes through.
Right, they could walk away from it, yeah. Okay.
Summit Avenue? You asked them to give an update on something?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had gone to county's Park and Planning and just in conjunction with the idea of the Summit Avenue Extension, you know, there's different ways that different people are talking about it. And for some, it's just, oh, you're just adding a road. And that's not how we've always envisioned it, it is creating a streetscape, right? I, I'm not trying to be cute, yes, that includes a roadway, yes, the idea is to move a certain percentage of traffic off of Connecticut Avenue to improve the intersection, that bottleneck that we have. But it's not to create a new Connecticut Avenue, it's to create a streetscape that we would also put in pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, very intentionally, looking at the bike master plan, our walkability study, and then creating that with trees. But then what we asked county to look at was based on how they're looking at the Summit Avenue Extended, how would they use the new wedges of land that would be created between Summit and Connecticut? And granted, we're, we're at the state, we're just dealing with big blocks, right? We're not looking at each individual parcel. But, you know, they came up with a concept and we will send this around, I'm happy to put it out on the website, where they just talked about from Connecticut Avenue back kind of mid-block, that's the area to do the mixed UCRT that is envisioned within the sector plan. Seventy-five feet of height, mixed use development, get residential in with retail and commercial. And then as you move westerly toward the new Summit Avenue portion, they have the smaller blocks, which they, you know, that's identified as the low-density residential that fits our CRN. So that's stepping down to maximum of forty-five feet in height. But again, with the potential for mixed use, so you could have retail along the streetscape with residential above, just on a smaller, massing, smaller height. And then with green buffers along especially the western side of Summit, so that, you know, those residential properties from Kenmore, their, the envision is not to have development along their side, to create more of a greenscape and a green buffer so that it is keeping as much space from their property to the mixed use, but it would allow us to create this new mixed-use streetscape corridor along Summit Avenue. So the other thing, you know, they did was just what they call, they, they pull pictures from developments around the county that are just representative of what they could envision going there if the CRT or CRN uses were achieved. So in that low-density CRN right along the eastern edge of Summit Avenue, it could be townhouses, it could be mixed use. So some of the images they picked are, you think about Symphony Park, those townhouses down by Straffmore, you know, creating, again, that meets the mission for additional housing, a mixed style of housing, and that would obviously create a very residential feel to that Summit Avenue. And then as you move more to the Connecticut Avenue side, it's your more traditional mixed use, right? Residential stacked above some sort of commercial retail on a, on a brown level. So you create a streetscape, you're adding retail square footage, but also maximizing the, the mixed-use residential, which is honestly at the, the center of Thrive, adding additional housing where housing just doesn't exist today.
So planning has no plans for this yet, they've not been asked to do anything with it. The reason we asked is because the maps that you see from State Highway and from NC are just these lines. Yeah, they're engineering plans, you can't visualize how it could actually could look. So they pulled this together for us to, to try to help with that vision of the long-term, that this just isn't just a two-lane road that's cutting through, it's actually bringing the amenities that I think a lot of people would like to see and then additional, you know, the housing.
It's nice, and I'm glad I'm sitting next to Congresswoman herself. It's, it's, I mean, as a guy we're talking about, because it can be a conversation starter.
Right.
You know, to have that visioning process with the community on what, you know, what.
Engineering plans do not help with this, it's confusing.
This is, this is useful, I think.
Yeah.
We have to think about how we use that.
Yeah, I just got that from Carrie Sanders, just sent that to me, so, but we can post that for sure.
So is the idea for next steps for this?
So I think next step, taking us back, like you said, I will reach out to Park and Planning just to say, you started a dialogue just at a meeting about our design guidelines and I will throw in their sector planning, what happens once thrive passes? Because we would like to know what, what might be a timeline for our official approved documents to get reviewed and/or updated. And just starting with the design guidelines, which don't get into specific uses and zoning application, is that something that could be done, what is that process? So that's, that's the intent there, just what is that process? Get that information, bring it back, in the meantime, we'll be reviewing those. I mean, I think, do you have everything you feel you need on the ordinances around land use and building?
I just need time.
Time, yeah.
I just need time, I've got a deer park, I've got Chevy Chase, I've got some outside municipalities. Pretty clear what we, we want to do, we've been talking about it for a few years, you know, a bit of time.
Is there benefit to doing it all at once? Or if we feel we've got one section that's ready to go?
The way I have it drafted right now is I'm starting going to be, spreading definitions based on the biggest issue we have. What's the definition, how are we defining it? You know, I wanted to touch on everything, I wanted to touch on fences and retaining walls all at once. We've had a lot of communication, especially from the north side of the guards, to storage containers, outside construction projects, I wanted to include that. You know, these are all things we're looking at, again, it's just one of everything else time. You know, we can break it up, I mean, I can probably get your park plan to you pretty quickly. You know, a whole chapter, you know, maybe if you remember. That's what council wants.
See the tray up over the window? Stop the calls. Well, stop calls, you're going to take a call right now. I know, right? It is something that needs to somehow, some way get up to the top of the list, I know that's hard, I trust.
Is there anything, any of us can do to help?
I think, I think I'm there, you know, obviously I, I need to talk with you and Darren just to kind of go over other things, so it's, because I'm looking at it and it's making sense to me, if those make sense to you. So just in some context, I think it's all good. You know, when he wants to say eight a week, I mean, four weeks or something, that would give me a little more urgency to go.
Let's do that, I'm all for doing that. I will send you some possible dates and times because, you know, on the calendars we'll figure out time just to look at what's there now and then kind of build a timeline for getting it in the agenda. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience have any comments regarding what we were just discussing? Yes, thank you. See, number six, the Housing Opportunities Commission Playground Equipment Council, I believe I forwarded the email that I received from, I think it was the facilities manager
At Hughes.
at the HOC, asking us if we would be willing to contribute some financial support to repairing the playground equipment behind the, the building. And they currently are, have a lease with the county and responsible for everything in the park and in the field. I asked the facilities manager to reach out to Matt, that we had a town meeting tonight, to reach out to Matt to discuss, you know, what amount of money they were talking about, what exactly needed to be done, so we could talk about it at the meeting tonight. He has not gotten back to Matt, so I guess at this point, I guess the question is, do we even want to entertain the, the idea of providing some sort of grant funding to repair the playground equipment? And then we can get back to if we can get a figure or something, but if you guys are not in favor of it, then.
We asked a couple residents, my kids.
I see the yellow tape.
And they were immediately in favor, but I told them about the trade-offs.
Right.
An opportunity for teaching them about decisions, knowing that they're going to be leaving.
I don't know what the update on time period is on that, I suppose it's at twenty-three, I think, ended twenty-three, that's, I talked to Al earlier. He, he was, he said ended twenty-three or sometime in twenty-three, but, you know, it could slip to twenty-four very easily.
Yeah, so if they leave and it gets, we don't know exactly what's going to happen, maybe it's.
Well, MCPS is supposed to come in and make it
Early childhood.
Early childhood and, you know, they could just decide to put a whole new playground.
Exactly, so we don't know what happens with it, so, I, I mean, I, I think it's heavily used. It's one of the only parks on that side of the town.
It's the only park on the west side.
I think that, I think that we should do it, especially if it's not a lot of money. But when they do it, is it, is there a way that we can work with MCPS inciting it in a place that will not get destroyed with construction if they end up, or just at least talking with them about not, not having a sum cost that just gets in three years, although that might be a little further away.
Well, I wonder if it's, because that was brought in by HOC, right?
No, no, they, well, there was playground equipment there and it was replaced. Actually, Al and I talked about, because the, the elementary school closed, the building sat empty for years and it was old playground equipment. I don't know who purchased the playground equipment that was installed there, whether it was HOC or whether the county put it in, I don't know. But now that HOC did replace the rubber pad underneath the playground equipment several years ago, because there was a lot of tears in it, and we asked them to do it and they did.
I guess my question would be then, building off, maybe what you were saying is, to MCPS, would it set that under somebody else? What are your standards for playground equipment if and when you guys take over this site? Is this still usable or are you going to say no? Either because it, the equipment doesn't meet our standards, it, it's not right.
Or if they're pre-k, maybe too old for that.
Or, or just because of its age unto itself, we would want to life cycle replacement. I mean, like, are, is this something that is, can be repurposed, reused, moved? Or is this something that, just knowing if we make this investment in two years, that might be the, like, that's, of course, we don't.
Well, like, the investment isn't huge, I think, you get two years of use out of this playground equipment for our kids to enjoy.
Right.
So I just don't know what.
Two thousand dollars for two years, great. If it's forty-two thousand dollars for two years, it's kind of a, just one of them.
Right, and, and I mean, you may say it's, you know, five thousand dollars and we'll say, well, we'll give you fifty percent of that. But it's not a big change. So I guess what I'm hearing though is you guys are open to accept ordinance. So, so let's, I don't mind giving another, you know, hint that if he reaches out to us that we'll see if we can accommodate. Because I know that the rubber matting is actually more, was pretty expensive for replacing that. It's kind of with the perky page that we put down.
Okay, would they, would they reach out then to coordinate or definitely back from MCPS about what they want?
I don't know, I mean, that, to me, that's so far in the future, I don't. I know, but then they have to turn, I mean, that's assuming that MCPS knows the right way, I know what they're going to do.
Knows what, knows what they want.
And now with, last time I talked to Seth Adams, who's a very difficult person to track down, he indicated that it wouldn't take him more than six months to do whatever they needed to do. Now, with last time I talked to Seth Adams, who's a very difficult person to track down, he indicated that it wouldn't take more than six months to do whatever they needed to do in the building to turn it back for the school. It's got to go about that, but.
But they'd also talked about potentials for leave, where you do.
Right.
Building that structure is not able to handle it.
No, but that was in the time where they were looking at possibly turning it back into an elementary school, and the lot is just too small for today's. So that's why they were going, but it was pretty clear they wanted to take it back.
Well, then maybe I need to set process with what you're describing to get the follow up from H O C and then honor your suggestion that that. They are saying, oh, we can't get replacement parts, we want playground equipment, they're ready to put something new in. And I do think it makes sense to dissolve with M C P S's playground gurus.
Right. Yeah, and we can do a repair to get it back into action, that's for sure, yeah.
Or, yeah. For sure. We're facing similar issue with our playgrounds where they're not able to replace the existing component, but they can. Kind of make something else, like we're doing at, like we're doing at the time, or what we're doing, you know, possibly was a point of the same ballpark, where they can find something else that's different. And they can make it work in the park, so maybe that's something interesting.
Right.
But they cannot obviously fund it yet, we don't know what we're talking about, actually.
Yeah, I think the main thing was to see if we were open to providing um support to, you know. To playground that doesn't block, that's, and it sounds like we are, okay.
Yes.
All right, well, if we get what we feel is kind of an outrageous figure, we'll get back to the council, we feel like it's within reason, am I seeing that?
Someone's trying to come in.
Okay, um, one of the other things, when I talked to Al today, he mentioned that there is a um a inlet. On the property that is probably clogged and it's causing a little flooding, it's right there on the end of the building, or like towards the front of my house. Uh, it's in the grass next to the building, and I've I've noticed it too, so Matt's gonna check to see if it's actually. Bundles into our thing, um and then if it doesn't, you know, reach out to H O C and let them know they need to get it quick. Okay, um, any questions about gesture?
Oh, I said, sure. Um.
Can I, don't talk to you.
Bush, my boss, across the street, um, I'm looking at the the resolution number one down here.
Uh, we haven't gotten to that yet, okay.
Yeah, I know, well, but. How much is fifteen hundred and eighty square feet worth of turf? I just say that, but why don't you have the developer to then donate some money?
We're, we're actually pulling that, George, that it's, we're taking it off.
Oh, you're gonna take it off?
Yes, we're not, we're not talking about it tonight, because the uh the town attorney.
Okay, I understand that, but when I'm saying this, you know. Let him provide some benefit.
I don't disagree with you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes. Okay, um, all right, so any questions about housing opportunities question, all right, so we do a quick. Down the uh council line to uh, do you want to give any updates on any of your options, so, Derek?
The only thing I'll say is that um, we've been talking with Nate and uh we're going to put a traffic committee meeting scheduled for sometime in mid October. Um, just to kind of revisit things that now that traffic is coming back and business issues are out there still.
So the mobility and traffic.
I'm sorry, mobility.
The M T C. Okay, all right, but you don't have a date yet?
No, we have to pull the numbers.
Okay, well, do you need to uh ask for new numbers, or do you guys feel like you have the people, or is there an opportunity to, you good?
We're pretty good on track, mobility tracks.
M T C.
M T C.
Could you back me off of that, though, I I'll give my update when you ask for it, but can I comment on, so we're also going to follow up with S H A.
Oh, good.
We have, we have to have an S H A follow up meeting.
Yes.
Their feet to the fire, um, just on all the things that we have been discussing with them, and then also. This issue of being designated as urban core area and.
Right, so they silence us down?
Yeah.
Yeah, and one of the items that we asked to look at too was, uh, or they brought up, and now we're hoping to get some data on, is that light. At Washington Street and Connecticut Avenue, that they had wanted to put a full traffic light, there's been some concerns from the residents about doing that. So um, we'd like them to provide the data of why they think it needs to be done.
Right, um, yes, and and to make sure that we we've received a email also from from residents that was asking for.
Right.
Then to make sure that they review the safety analysis that was done when that was put in.
Right, so we need to follow up with them.
Yeah, yeah, that's one of the issues, I wish I could mediate for October from the, I mean, just one, yeah, after you've bought yourself in. Pumped up, yeah, to end up as only.
Yeah, I am. Okay, good, um, yes, let me know when you're, I think, there's like ten things I think they're supposed to.
At least.
Yeah.
It might, it might actually take, I was thinking about, maybe we have to grab also a letter to S H A. And M C P S about these issues, and then also those that run the report.
Okay.
T L C grant.
Right.
Just to make sure that they're, you know, replying to every request, and then now that we're seeing recommendations.
Okay.
Um. But we'll uh, I guess we can start to talk with them about that.
Well, I I'm just waiting for uh the crossing on Wheatley and Metropolitan that we're supposed to get, when did you nail the council, that was approved?
That was approved. That was agreed to in twenty seventeen, approved by twenty nineteen, the funding in twenty twenty for.
Installation?
Waiting for Nate to give me an update. Eric Guns is in.
And every time I talk to Derek, I go, yep, yep, it's there, it's gonna happen, yep, 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 I mean, one day it actually will happen.
Well, when we do it, it answers for forgiveness.
That's why we have to keep having meetings, because every time they give us a little good news, like they say, well, we got good updates, I'll save that for then.
No, I I I'm not impressed with their good news, wow, we put crosswalks at the intersections on, you know, Connecticut Avenue, well, that was tough, wasn't it? That was, you know, yeah, the pink guy out there.
That's very U-turn sign.
Yeah, they did that.
Yeah.
So they give the easy stuff, okay, yeah.
So we have to keep it fresh on.
All right, uh, yeah. So I have a few updates uh related to the racial justice committee first, uh, thank you to the town and Kensington Can for sponsoring the back to school block party, which we were able to do despite the rain. At town hall, we had a lot of happy kids, we had a lot of support from the business community, um tumbleweed, Kensington Road Bookshops are pro. Um, Tyler Wentmore Interior, St. Paul's Church, um all donated um prizes for the kids that were school related. Um, so thank you for helping us make that uh event successful. Uh, there are two history events coming up, which will, you'll see, um and uh email communications, September twenty first is the the nearest one, and this is. Uh, or you can hear it town hall and via Zoom, Robert Engelmann, a resident nearby, has done a history project, it's called Slavery Where I Grew. Um, so we encourage people to attend that, and then on October eighth, there will be an event, um, uh, Pendar at the um Leonard Jackson Community Center, and there'll be more information about that coming up. Um, and then finally, I just wanted to share that um we did have our racial justice committee meeting to discuss the hate flyers at St. Paul Park. Um, we came up with a lot of ideas and actions we want to pursue, which we are following up on, um, Grant Tracy and I uh uh started, um. Tracy reached out to the Montgomery County Chapter of the Maryland Municipalities.
President.
To see if we could have a conversation with other municipalities about the rise and hate crimes by incidents at an upcoming meeting. Um, we've, I've had a call with the Anti-Defamation League, and they're open to doing community training. Um, which we're, I'm following up on, and we might join with other communities and doing that. And we're also going to work on putting together um an opinion piece that describes what happened, what residents can do to be vigilant, how to report. Um, when these incidents happen and why it is important to report, um so stay tuned, all of this is in motion now, uh and we will keep everyone posted.
Okay, thank you. Hey.
Um, the only thing that I wanted to say was related to the gigs event, um, I thought it was really great event for the community.
I couldn't believe how many kids were there.
They were so amazing, and I got there an hour into it, and it was, it was just, I heard the doors opened and there were all of a sudden.
Yeah.
As many people as they expected, but I thought, I thought it was really a great event for the community, and I'm I'm so excited that these will be happening.
Yeah.
Every week, it seemed like from my perspective, I was there till the end, and then beyond, I stayed and just to see what would happen. I think it closes down in time, um, very professional, very organized, very seen.
Really good to me at least.
Uh huh.
Um. It just, yeah, I talked to a couple of the shop owners who were really thrilled about about it. Um, it was great to hear George's, George's feedback saying it was better, um, minus the people shout in the background that I did not hear.
Uh huh.
But um, yeah, I just think it was, I just want to say kudos to, you know, you people shopping with the performance, I thought it was really great.
Yeah, those, now those kids are future teenagers. They were, they were really good, the kids, uh, I got there when the lady was singing, and she was incredible, she's a um a young lady with Down syndrome. And she, let me tell you, she knew all those songs, she did not have a cheat sheet like Sean did, she was fantastic. And really, um, it was so good, he brought up a lot of kids who, it was probably really good for them to get on the stage and just, um, you know, yeah. Work for their self esteem, self esteem, and that, and everybody was supportive.
Is that, you think, when I was talking to Sean afterwards, maybe we were, we were kind of, we weren't remembering who agreed to write the letter to the county council and invite them to the. October fifteenth event, and I thought that maybe he did, and I looked back, I actually thought it was him, but I think.
That has a draft, so when uh Mayor Purman and I decided to not put that on the agenda, because we wanted to see how the concert went first.
Right. Right.
See if we can do amend the letter, uh, we can pass it around later this week, if the, if the council agrees, then we can start saying.
Is the fifteenth the one that's uh doing jubilee, or is it?
No, it's, this is the, uh, the, the concert that Sean recommended we invite them to was the the full paid concert.
Okay.
The louder one that you think, nine, so.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll pass it along then.
Okay, isn't that what's sold out? Uh.
I don't know.
No, I think uh.
I know the, like, pre-release tickets, the cheaper tickets are sold.
Okay.
I mean, yeah. Um.
Okay, great. Connor?
Um, yeah, a couple, one is, uh, we had members of the city of Bowie, Maryland's mayor and council and economic development committee. Join us for a walking tour of our historic business district along Howard Avenue. Um, so first is a thank you to Mayor Tracy and Anne who joined us, but also Andrew Rowde. And as well Nicole and um one from the K-Town ladies who. They, we ended Edition Graham, and they helped to reinforce, we talked about a a community. Residents taking up this, you know, social and other engagements, and so they did a great presentation, but it was a wonderful walking tour. To show that even in a very small geographical space, where we were stopping seemingly every twenty feet to point out. Ways that our business community has activated their space, it's public art, it's using their parking lots in different creative ways like gigs, it's our. Even our urban park at Howard, at Howard Avenue and the concerts we're going on, the farmer's market, and it just, it took us two hours to get. Two, two and a half hours to get from town hall around the corner and down to Edition Graham.
But we did walk through Flint Park, I mean.
Yep, and so it was, um, the the impetus for this is that the historic Old Town Bowie, which is also a, you know, railway. Part of their town, very similar to what we have, is not, uh, it's just not thriving the way ours is. And so Andrew Rowde, who's a resident here in the town, happens to be a member of the economic development um committee over there, and he recommended that they, you know. Talk to us about how we have been successful, and we gave a presentation uh to the Economic Development Council, and we gave a presentation to their council, and that spurred this invitation for them to do the walking tour, and. I've since received several emails of just how impactful it was to see it in action. Um, we have very, you know, we had several impromptu conversations with business owners, because we poked their head in the door, or you say.
They came outside, it was really cool.
I mean, yeah, we had fifteen people walking a mask on the, and and they did, without prompting, they reinforced. Exactly what we talked about, of our marketing efforts and explore Kensington with their individual branding. Um, but also that it's, a lot of it is community driven, be it Kensington Can and other business associations, or the individual shop. Owners who have taken their passions and turned them into large events, we just talked about the gigs concert, but the day of the book festival, the car show, pumpkin rock and roll, these are all things that. The town has not been the impetus for it, it is our business community, and we layer support on top. Um, so it's demonstrated to them kind of a somewhat of a recipe card of how to help make some of these things successful, and. They have, uh, in terms of they do have a festival coming up October first, so they hope to attend, that it's gonna be in that uh Old Town Bowie. So, um, next, I just, a huge kudos to the staff and and crew for Labor Day, the parade. Uh, and and the festival, but mainly for all of our volunteers, just. It's easy, we just gotta walk in the parade, that's the easy part, um.
Highlight. Need five more.
To anybody who runs in the future, you need a lot.
You need a lot.
It turns out, we have thirty pounds, and we could have used it all before we even got off Connecticut, we were being judicious. Um, but it turns out it, there's, there's a lot of demand for games.
There's a lot of demand, I mean, when kids start showing up with bags.
Or trailing you, or trailing you on scooters, you know, that's a.
Yeah, that's telling, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm.
This is why you shouldn't feed the. The animals.
I have one on this one, we'll give it to you, the resident bags, if you want to, you can love it.
Right, I just realized, I didn't mention that, thank you, Connor. Um, speaking of our wonderful business community, the uh racial justice committee, the town Kensington Kensington Can. Um, we all collaborated on putting together two hundred welcome bags for new apartment presidents, the idea being. Uh, we wanted to welcome people who move into apartment buildings where we may not have known that they've moved there, because it's unlike the sale of a house, where you can more easily find a record or. Communicate with the real estate community, um, and K-Town ladies covers that, so we put together really nice welcome bags with information about the town. Council committees, how to get information, information on town events, um businesses and some gifts, including a poster of the town Kensington, which is updated. And I spoke with the manager at Silver Creek Apartments, she said that she and the residents were stoked, was the word she used. Um, and we also distributed them at Kensington House, for anybody who moved here within the last year, as well as the apartments on Cross Street in this area, for anybody that moved here in the last year. So that's something we plan to keep going, but again, really couldn't have done it without the business community and the town.
So does that include uh rental cones, ones that have been rented to people, or we just.
I haven't figured that out yet.
Well, I asked because next door to me, uh, a a couple just are moving in with their two kids, and uh it's, uh, it'd be nice to give them a welcome bag.
Yeah, we should give them that.
But a welcome bag, so, I mean, I could, you could find a bunch of things.
That, that's one of the things that we sort of struggled with on the committee was. That new purchasers get these nice baskets from the, the ladies.
Ladies K-Town, well, the the town, you know, pays for the, right, yes.
With some support from the town, so, so similar to cost share. And you can't ask Silver Creek to store that many baskets.
Right.
They just won't, you know, space, and so we were trying to balance, what will they be good about handing out versus, you know. What happens for the single family homes? So I, I, I don't know if the ladies guild, is it what?
The K-Town ladies.
K-Town ladies, it was one, right.
K-Town ladies, they dropped the guild, it's K-Town ladies.
Um, I don't know if they're up for trying to manage the rentals as.
No, I I'm more asking, like, if as a resident, that I know someone is renting a home versus buying a home. That I could pick up a bag from the town office and deliver it to my new neighbor, because I want them to get on the listserv, I want them to know how, you know, how to get involved. So, because I've seen the bags, they're great.
Okay.
And so it's not a matter of um wanting to give them the, you know, the expensive basket. It's more of wanting to provide something welcoming, but it should be on, you know, like if Nate, if his next door neighbor was renting her house, he would know, oh, I could go get a.
Um.
A little basket and hand it to her. So that's, that's my question, I'm I'm putting the onus on the neighbor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The resident who's the neighbor that wants to.
We can talk about this at an upcoming Kensington Can meeting, and. We can talk about this at an upcoming Kensington Can meeting and I can imagine, you know, putting a little. Um, article in the town journal describing that we have his way of welcoming people.
Yeah, or maybe if you keep ten bags here and, you know, in Town Hall and just say swing by, pick one up and.
Yeah, and I know when I talked briefly with Nicole about the welcome bag project, she was interested as well and said maybe it's a chance to sort of harmonize the two projects. I explained to her the scale of what we were doing and why we hadn't asked K-Town ladies to do two bags. Um, so I think it's something we can follow up on.
Okay, okay. So you don't have any extra that I could give thanks to?
I think we might even have a couple.
But they're a very lovely couple. And officially moved in, but it's nice to see somebody actually really. Okay, um.
My only, my last one.
I'm sorry.
Is a separate kudos to um, to Jason and Paul Lo and Joe. Uh, we're new residents on the north side and they were walking their dog and I was walking my dog around St. Paul Park. And they happened to see me Thursdays with mowing schedule and I've been out talking to all three of them at one point. And she stopped me just to say. How do you know, you know, and I explained a little bit and she's like, I just want you to know, I'm brand new to the community and, you know, just started this as our loop to walk the dogs. And the crew here is amazing. Every single one of them stops to say hi. They get to know my dog. You know, now my dogs know them and they're like, it's, it's such a small thing, but just unbelievably special. So I wanted to make sure that they know that, pass it along, but. That's our group. So.
Great, thank you. And my dog loves her. She can hear Jason's voice, his Aussie voice, and then she starts crying and she wants to go see him. So. All right, I'll just, I wanna um, also provide a, a little bit of update here, um, particularly for the um, council. Uh, on Thursday, the fifteenth, which I think there's a conflict or something else. I heard that they also reused, um. Um, the MML chapter meeting is this Thursday at six thirty. That's all by Zoom.
That conflict is the public meeting?
Yes, the, I knew on the fifteenth, yes, the public meeting um, on the Summit Avenue, Summit Avenue and uh.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. I'll take just a second, cause I left the date and time out of what I put on the lister and I appreciate every single person here who let me know about it. Um, but there is a public meeting being held by the property owner and development team. This is not the towns, it's not the DRBs, but it is a public meeting on Thursday, September fifteenth. It is from seven PM to nine PM. The property that is being addressed is ten five hundred Summit Avenue, also known as the Kaiser Foundation Building. Just outside of the town limits. The meeting will be held at Knoll Station Wine Company, which is one zero four one four Dietrich Avenue. Um, it's the one at the east end of the building and it will be in the upstairs loft part. There is an email address. Um, to RSVP if you want to. It is not required. They said if you're nice enough to RSVP, it just helps them understand their space constraint needs.
Okay, that's to be clear, this particular project is not within our boundary.
It is not in the town. It's, you know, it will not come before the DRB. It's not to say we may not choose to make, yeah, write a letter, but yeah, this is. Not in the town of Kensington, just next door.
Okay, uh, well anyway, so our chapter meeting though is uh, on Thursday, September fifteenth at six thirty. Everybody's by Zoom. If you need the link, just let me know. Um, also for the uh, members of the council, um. The Kensington Can is having a, is hosting a business um, get together at Flint Park. On Thursday, uh, the twenty second, September twenty second, from five to seven. So please put that on your schedule if you're able to attend. Um, there'll be uh, some food and some drink. We waived the alcohol. Was set last month. So uh, please stop by. It's actually a very nice event. Uh, and then on Tuesday, October fourth, uh, Connor and I will be um. Hosting the business, uh, businesses um, next to the, in the parking lot next to SW seven for coffee and some. Treats and that'll be from nine to ten. If you're, I know it's difficult hours if you're working back, if you're available to come in, that's great. Cause they open their stores usually around eleven, so we didn't want to start too early. So that'll be on October fourth. So please mark your calendars. Uh, also, I am working with Sean regarding uh, pumpkin rock and roll. Um, trying to figure out whether, um, I'm actually hoping it's not, cause that will show progress that Warner Circle will not be available, but we'll see. Um, but um, there'll be more news on that one. Check it out. So, and lastly. Um, I think I did see some response regarding the town shop that we want to put on the, our website. I think everybody saw the. Email that this is all we come up with our designs, put them on the store and then people can go directly and buy their town of Kensington sweatshirts. So we'd first want to buy one of those and um, you know, maybe something for a walkover down the line, but we can just send them there and then um. People can uh, we can have some, a few designs up for the holidays. So get your kits. So Carrie Ann's working on that now. Uh, we will have a um, a fall journal on that, I'll send that out shortly on our due dates. That, and I too want to thank the staff and the Labor Day parade festival. It was wonderful. The weather was great. Everybody had a good time. Um, it was a busy place and I, I know this, you know, we haven't done a parade in two years, but I think it came off really, really good. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, train show is this past weekend. I don't know who got by, but it was packed, packed. I think the weather worked out well for them on Sunday, nothing else to do, so then everybody went to the train shows. And um, and let's see, and it did work out great for the community block party. Thank you for organizing that. Um. And uh, I do have a question. Um, did the, did the handbook, where's the status of the handbook? Do we have, do we have it ready?
Oh, may, maybe it just.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. It's one of those things that's still hanging out there. You know, we, we, we got a lot of things hanging out. We need to get this in front of you. That's fine, that's fine. Uh, and I, I do want to thank you for the concrete cutting. It has been wonderful. As somebody who goes up Knolls Avenue, I mean, you know, uh, to, it's Connecticut, there was a lot of. Ones that you could really trickle through. So thank you for getting that done. So, okay, I think that's, that's it for me. And does anybody in the audience have a question for these reports? Okay, alright, so I'm the town manager and staff.
A couple of quick updates that I don't really on the agenda. The uh, park upgrades that we're planning for this past Friday, Winter Park are now scheduled for September twenty ninth. Uh, it's to remove the final, um, overhead and some issues and like a, a planning of. Most of the, some of the limitation lights, just to see how they look. Maybe try to say Paul, if he works first. Um. The um, aprons on Washington Street. Um, a number of replacements are now scheduled for the last week of September, first week in October, uh, with a number of other smaller apartment jobs. And I just wanted to discuss the October tenth meeting. Uh, it is Columbus Day, which is now a town holiday. Uh, hopefully also we have uh, MML in the room, uh, council members have given a bounce. I don't know. Do you want to consider moving the date or moving the schedule?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'll be in MML and I'm proud to still be in MML and you're gonna be in MML. So I think we'll, we can move the date.
Okay.
So what is the councils?
Usually we do it the following Tuesday. Is that Tuesday, I think?
Monday.
It's Tuesday.
Oh, the following, uh, well, I think MML.
It will be in MML.
Well, it ends on the thirteenth. It's the eleventh. I think it's the ninth tomorrow.
She, Susan said between the ninth and the eleventh is MML.
And I don't think it goes to Wednesday. It goes to Tuesday.
Is that, yeah. When on Tuesday? Happy thing or is it Tuesday?
I don't think it would be an all day thing. I mean, you could make it back at some point for a meeting. That's insurance.
Steve, do you zoom?
Yeah, we could do a zoom that night.
Yeah, it's nine to eleven. The, the ninth to the eleventh.
Right. So you wanna do it on the eleventh and just plan a zoom? That are, everyone? Yes. Eleven. Which will all be virtual. Um, Alex, can you make sure that gets changed on the calendar? Thank you. Alright. Anything else?
I have a couple of resolutions for the public appearances first.
Okay. Alright, uh, it's time for public appearances. Anything that's not on the agenda? Um, this is your opportunity. Jack?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. I have three astronomical announcements. The, the moon is still nearly full. The full moon was actually Friday night. Um. On Thursday, the twenty second will be the autumnal equinox. And on Friday. Um, October seven will be the, the, their, their Conant's meteor shower, which peaks in the evening with about ten meteors per hour. Unfortunately, a nearly full moon will make it difficult to see the, the faint meteors. Best viewing for this meteor is in the early evening hours, unlike many meteor showers. When it, when it's best in the pre-dawn hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. I was just showing everybody, uh, John Gerson sent me a picture of uh, St. Paul's with the full moon right over it and it looks great. So really bright in the skies. It's, yeah.
Coming as they've been rising.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, Jack. Uh, Joe?
Just a quick question. I, I was wondering if the um, um, the heads of the uh, MTC committee. Might elaborate a little bit about what they expect to take up at their meeting that uh, council member Bartram alluded to in passing, but uh. Without getting into any detail, and there's a lot of um, traffic related topics in town that are percolating and I just wonder what uh, the committee expects to take up at its meeting. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, agenda, I don't yet.
We, we, we don't have an agenda, not, not being pressing except kind of go back and look at the old business. That we haven't resolved. Um, I know that we wanna, we've been talking with state highway. About putting um, radar speed cameras around the town and, and roads that we don't own. Uh, there is this proposal to put a fully signalized light at Washington and Connecticut. That we, we want to know more about, even though it's a, a state highway decision. Um. You know, I don't know if we will take up the, the rush hour restrictions on the north side. It seems to be an issue that we. Haven't been able to meaningfully resolve. We didn't let the annexation. Um, anything else that comes running?
Now, we talked a little bit about this and can't remember how we framed this, but. I don't want to set the wrong expectations, but it was about getting feedback on the general restrictions throughout town.
So we had previously asked the MTC to review primary enforcement locations for the MCP. Uh, so we'd like to follow up on that, see if there's any locations that they'd like to see us enforce. That we're not currently enforcing. We have a number of um, uh, traffic analysis that we need to renew or we have impressed for this speed limit in all places. Um, and we need to follow up on a number of other patch sites that, that dealt with um, um, traffic analysis requests.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Joe?
Yeah, I, I would like to suggest, uh, what, maybe the committee would like to take up or consider taking up uh, compliance with the new speed limit uh. In town, the twenty miles an hour. Anecdotally, it does not seem to be widely respected, but uh, it would be perhaps a topic for the committee to uh, to address. And also in addition to north side uh, rush hour restrictions, there are south side rush hour restrictions, which uh. I've often pointed out have been uh, respected only um, in the breach. So there's another issue there too. And I know that uh. Uh, there is some interest on the committee to talk about uh, whether to keep in place some of those restrictions or. Or maybe consider dismantling or modifying them.
Okay, thank you. Seeing the other teams, so we will continue on to ordinance resolutions and regulations. Uh, we are striking number one. So Matt, do you wanna um, talk about two?
Thank you, Mayor Furman. Uh, rest before the mayor council this evening is resolution R dash twenty five dash twenty twenty two. A resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorized the town manager to accept a proposal from Brooklyn Equipment Company. Uh, David Bergmarlow for the purchase of a Kubota V series RTV, their source well quotation two four four seven eight five one. Uh, this is basically an ETV that they refer to as RTV, uh, which will be used by the town staff and public works. For various jobs including snow rigging, um, touring events and other um, odd jobs here and there where um. It's a little easier to get an RTV around now in a truck. Um. The price is through Sourcewell bid, uh, which is a national bid that we are piggybacking off of, uh, which gave us a six thousand.
Three hundred and ten.
Three hundred and ten dollar discount on the NSRP equipment. Uh, it is not in stock. Uh, we were told. Uh, to expect it in six, twelve months if it moves.
That's a question. How did they come up with the discount?
So they bid it out. Um, Sourcewell's like a national bid program. They bid it out. Uh, and then Kubota comes back for the price and then as a municipal government, we are allowed to piggyback off that price.
So the economy is still.
Pretty much, yeah, yeah.
You have a question? You're gonna need a bag?
Uh, yes. Uh, it will be in our garage. Uh, the nice thing about this is it is in enclosed cap, um, so who will be able to use it during their storms?
That's good for transporting things too. Do we have to license it?
Yes, if you have a bag. We will have to license it, wait in the stream. We'll get LG next. And uh. Like I said, we're eight, twelve to six, twelve months. Um, they don't have any good stuff.
I know it'll fit the garage, cause we got five golf carts in there. Alright, uh, are there any questions from the audience? Seeing any? Any further questions from the uh, council? Is there a motion?
Can be had.
Okay.
I'm moving to approve resolution R dash twenty five dash twenty twenty two.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
All those favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number three?
Mayor Council for you is resolution over R dash twenty six dash twenty twenty two. A resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorized the town manager to accept the proposal from Contracting Specialists Incorporated CSI. For certain Berkeley teams within the protocol that begins in the town hall. Um, with the attachment to the resolution, you'll notice there's some different pricing on there. Um, the entrance door and the construction of the bulkhead were within the existing contract to CSI for the limited area pit. Uh, so those were part of the add orders, the change orders within the existing contract. This resolution is for the repointing of the below, below veranda and the. Repointing of the walkway around. So if you walk out the main door from this level, uh, they will repoint their, they will repoint the breaking. On the ground level and on sides to match the new repointing of the veranda. Clean it up and uh, clean it up and get the white.
Yeah, I think the one out in the patio is more than just repointing. I think it's gonna have to be pulled up and started all over again.
So.
Cause it's a, it's a mess. I mean, it's talking about tripping houses.
During our, during our punchless meeting, we asked them to provide pricing for this and um, uh, the LA sent this over, so we're asking to proceed.
Okay. Well, it definitely needs to be done. It's in really bad shape. When we're done, this building will be in just fabulous shape by the time we're done, all these repairs. Council, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Yes? Okay, can I get a motion?
So I move that we adopt resolution number R dash twenty six dash twenty twenty two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, uh we're down to adjournment, if I can get a motion. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. See you on Monday, October eleventh.
Tuesday.
Over Zoom.
Tuesday.
Sorry, I'm reading Tuesday, change the day of the month of the day. Okay. Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Night.